Come back home and tell us.
Are we ready?
We're ready.
Okay. I'm going to call to order the first budget workshop for the Carabelle City Commission. It's the 2019-2020 budget workshop. It's Thursday, August 22, 2019, 5:01 PM. We're at Carabelle City Hall. And as being workshop, the invitation and pledge of allegiance to the flag are not necessary. So I just want to welcome our guests. And for the workshop today, we're going to review the water and sewer 2019-2020 budget proposal first. Mr. Painter is supposed to be here. Could someone give him a quick call? And then unless he wants to change that, he knew we were going to do this at 5:00. And then we'll review the general fund.
I got it.
And then we'll review the two smaller budget proposals, including the Carabelle Airport and the Carabelle Community Rebuildment Agency. But before we start that, we have some people here that would like to make presentations. So if you would like to come on up and come to the podium, and if you have anything to pass out, Ms. Keesha, you can give it to Ms. Keesha. And state your name at the podium and who you're representing us, who you're representing, and let us know what you are interested in, or if you have requests, budget requests. Okay, Mr. Thompson, would you come?
Okay. Thank you. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity of giving you some information about the Carabelle Food Pantry, and especially thank you for your past support.
Okay. And your name, sir?
My name is Tom Hummel.
Okay, for the records, okay.
With about less than 12 hours of notice, we had an inspection today from Second Harvest. And they didn't have one suggestion even to make, let alone anything they wrote down that we needed to change. So that was a successful day. We have 26 volunteers at the food pantry, 10 of which are serving on the board of directors. Everybody's unpaid. We distribute food and other donated items every week and to individuals that meet the federal property guidelines. And we have partner agencies with Second Harvest, Big Ben, USDA, and Farm Share. We've, we basically have a very simple operation. We spend about $22,000, last year, $22,280 buying food. We put that together with donated items, and that's what we distribute weekly. Carabelle's support makes up over half of what we spend on food and is essential to our success at accomplishing our mission. We only have about $1,500 of expenses a year. The major item, that is liability insurance, and we make some contributions to our, to the Carabelle United Methodist Church, which is kind enough to make a contribution in kind for our space to operate out of. I think most people are familiar with the food pantry. I did want to say two things. That when Hurricane Michael hit on Wednesday, we were distributing food the next morning, on Thursday morning. And we thought that was kind of, that was kind of accidental because Thursday's our usual distribution day, and we were ready to go anyway. But we decided that it would be a good thing for us to expand our mission for immediate disaster relief. What that means is, right after the wind stops blowing, the very next morning, to be there to pass out supplies for people and to stop just as soon as the aid starts to roll down the highway. Whoever gets there that starts passing out food, we stop. And the picture I sent you was of 1,440 MREs we've got stored in our dry storage, ready to go. And of course, we can take food out of our normal inventory. And so we're set up and ready. And I want to thank First United Methodist Church of Apalachicola for making those MREs available to us. So they're there, up on pallets in Control Climate Storage, and we're ready to go. And I really hope we never have to pass them out. We're always available to give tours, people that want to come over to see our operation, be there when we're passing out the food. And I just want to thank you for your time.
There's a lot of feedback, but thank you for your time, for all of you, the folks that serve there, your 26 volunteer members. We appreciate it.
We've got four of them right here.
Yes, four dedicated volunteers, hard workers, right there. They're at the food pantry every week, I believe.
Happy to answer any questions.
Just want to reiterate what the mayor said, thank you for all of your support.
All right. Thank you so much.
And we do appreciate your, you know, the day after Michael, I actually called Ms. Ann and I said, you know, we're going to need some help here. And the next thing I know, you all were open and had your clothing person even in, ready to provide clothing. So we appreciate it very much.
All right.
Thank you all. Thank you for making your presentation. Okay, is there, is there anyone else? Mr. Melcher, would you want to say anything? I don't know, maybe on behalf of Camp Gordon-Johnston or something?
The only thing I have is, in the next couple of days, if you're out in that way, we're going to have a new sign up.
Okay.
And we're going to have a dedication on Smithsonian Days for one of our buildings to Mr. Winchester. So that's a couple of upcoming things. So look for a new sign out there.
Okay, that we will. All right, then, we're going to move forward and review the water and sewer budget because Mr. Painter is here so that he doesn't have to stay into the late hours of the night.
Y'all live here.
I hope you all got copies of this in advance enough to review it. The core of it was done about August the 6th, and then we made a couple of last-minute changes last week, but it's been ready for review for quite some time. Would you want to review the budget with the commission, Charlie?
I just figured, it was a lot of stuff here, I'd just walk up and take responsibility for the questions.
Okay, but you all can see the estimated, and everything is an estimate. By now, everyone should understand that. We just go on past performance of the year before. And the water revenues are estimated to be at $980,000. And you can see the salaries, and then your back-end retirement coincides with that, and your life and health accounting. And if you have any questions as we, as we look through these numbers, please speak up. Don't be afraid to speak up. Don't be afraid to say your comments. You know, we're here for that. I want to hear what you have to say, and that's why Charlie's here as well. You see the utilities there have gone up significantly from $35,000 to $42,500.
Question about that?
Okay, at Miranda's suggestion, we have, she's taken a portion of the Carabelle City Hall utilities and applied that $6,000 to the water side, $6,000 to the sewer side. And that is why that has increased, and you'll see it on the sewer side has increased as well.
Is it my question, Charlie, has the usage increased on the?
Oh, the usage is up a little bit, but it's not, it's not, you don't see the values in different items that we buy, chemicals like, that have been staying pretty the same. Electric's come up some, and it could be the electric company, you know, they come out and change their meters everywhere. I'm not really sure that they raise their rates, but also, as the mayor stated, we're paying for half the electricity in the building here now.
Okay.
The electric.
Fair enough.
Yeah.
And all the utilities in the building include much more than just the power, things like terminets and that kind of thing. So you have your workers' comp, liability, property, those are basically engraved in stone, and automobile insurance for your work side. Maintenance and repair of equipment, same as last year, maintenance and repair vehicles, that's down a little bit. They've got a newer fleet. Maintenance and repair of buildings, advertising up a little bit. Other charges and obligations, the same. Copy machine lease, the same. Supplies, office supplies, and the same. Office materials down some. Chemicals are down.
Chemicals are down.
Mm-hmm. And that's a good thing. Gasoline, $10,000. Diesel, $7,000. That's up a tad bit. Capital projects are up a tad bit, and we've actually got a worksheet on capital projects here if you have a question. Pass that around. I don't have one.
They should have it.
They don't have it.
Okay.
Okay. So what they're talking about for water is purchase $25,000 worth of new water meters, a chlorine analyzer at $6,500, lawnmower trailer at $1,700, two truck payments, which are generally, that's generally in the capital improvements, and vacuum trailer at $30,000 split with the sewer, which, as we're looking at this, we'll just go ahead and, we'll get to sewer in a minute. Lost my place. Capital projects, safety is the same. Uniforms are down. Charlie's got a new program going with the uniforms. Was that?
Well, Keesha and I, we've talked with the uniform company and tried to work out so we'd get the price down a little bit. We thought it was a little bit high. We found some errors along the way. They corrected them, and this was the direction we thought we'd try them for another year. So we signed up. Yeah, so we signed a contract to continue with them for another year and see how it works out.
Good.
All right. Consultant fees the same, lab tests the same, permits and fines down $500. Utility service maintenance, that's for the main, that's a set contract for maintaining the water towers, and our loan payment for the water treatment plant, Carabelle and Landarc, and that's set in stone as well. And so that's that. The expenses expenditures for water, $956,245 versus water receipts at $980,000. Okay, sewer, sewer charges, you see those steps listed there, which comes out from one knee, $118,000. Salaries at $109,531. And the reason you see that smaller, lower there, and it's kind of higher, a tad bit on the water side, is that we split Mr. Painter's salary up between water and sewer now that he's the supervisor of both departments. Back-end retirement coincides with that. Life and health, of course, is up, $60,000. Accounting, $25,000, when I say that to the public. Training and travel, communications, the same. Hostage is the same. Utilities, you see that's up because one of the reasons is the, the $6,000 from City Hall's electric, and then that, then that predicted out was a little bit higher as well. Workers' comp, the same. Liability, property insurance, automobile, maintenance and repair of equipment, $220 versus $200 this year. Maintenance and repair of vehicles, we have $3,000 versus the $500. Maintenance and repair of buildings, $5,000. Other charges and obligations, $5,000. Office supply, $1,500. Supplies and materials, $1,800. Chemicals, $30,000. Gasoline, $1,200. Diesel, $4,000. Capital projects, $124,500. And that includes the reuse filters for the water treatment plant, the SCADA system, alarm system at the Landarc back station, the other portion of the vacuum trailer at $30,000. Pump for Sands Park lift station, that's a three-year project. Charlie wants to purchase three pumps there, one a year. They're on the downside before they just completely quit working. And he's priced a new crane truck, and you may want to tell him about it, $111,000. A three-year payment plan, like other vehicles, and first payment this year will be $37,000.
Correct. It's a Chevy truck with a utility body, and lift more crane on it, it'll lift 6,500 pounds. Right now, we use AAG services to do a lot of our heavy lifting because our crane truck's not big enough. And I still like to use them because they have a good mechanic that knows a lot of stuff. But anyways, the truck was able to break down into three payments. We've been looking at upgrading our truck and also replacing it. It's got oil leaks. It's, I have the guy working on the crane all the time, so we're spending a lot of money on maintenance, whereas we'd be better off having a newer truck so we're not going to do the maintenance and have the breakdowns and call the other guy to come out here and do the work that we could be doing. So when this company that we're buying our trucks from was able to do this with the crane truck for us, I thought it was a good deal because we could change it over three years instead of all up front.
I like the concept, Charlie. My question, is it going to save us some money on contracting out?
So in my job, I look at that in a couple of different ways. It would probably maybe a break-even, it's an expensive truck. But if I had one issue with sewage on the ground where it was running down the street or made it to the beach where I had to call a guy from Panama, and it took a while for him to get here, granted, he was coming on an emergency, if I could have saved that, then I could, then it'd save us money.
That's, that's bottom line. I mean, the expensive piece of equipment, but if you're going to.
It is.
I know I sign those checks, that's a lot of money.
It is.
Contracting somebody out, it's going to save us money. I support it.
All righty. And our safety, same as last year, $500. Uniforms are down as well, up from $3,500 to $18,000. Consultant fees down from $20,000 to $18,000. Lab tests down from $30,000 to $25,000. Permits and fines, the same at $300. And of course, our sewer loan payments engraved in stone at $212,500. Total estimated expenditures, $1,61,754.97. So then you add up your water receipts at $980, and then your sewer receipts, $1,118,000. That gives you $2,098,000 in income revenues for Carabelle's Water Sewer Department. And estimated water expenditures, $956,245. Estimated sewer expenditures, $1,61,754.97. Total estimated expenditures, $2,799,097. That leaves a surplus or reserve of $80,000 that we will put in the contingency if the commission approves in the water sewer, it's called on the bank account, renewal and replacement. And that, right now, that account, as of August the Tuesday, whatever day Tuesday was, it had $445,973. $80,000, we'll give it $525,973. And that gives us total expenditures, $2,098,000, which balances the water and sewer budget compared to the total receipts. These two balances. So, y'all have any questions, any other questions, please?
I have one. May not be the appropriate time for it, but I've given it some thought. And I know that water and sewer pays parts administrative salaries.
Yes.
My thought is, is the clerk's salary should be a part of that. Clerk is the clerk for the city. The clerk handles the budget preparations for water and sewer. And I would like to consider moving some of the clerk's salary to the water and sewer department.
Okay. I have a, an email from Mr. Payne regarding that. And I will tell you this year that Charlie, myself, and Ms. Courtney prepared the budget. Of course, reelection's guaranteed to no one, so. I asked Mr. Payne, is there justification for splitting the salary cost to the city clerk between the general fund and the water and sewer fund? And then another question, can the city do this legally or will this appear as a finding on the financial statement? And he writes back, as long as the clerk's time is spent in proportion to how the time is charged to the funds, you are fined and no finding will be, you know, put on the financial statements. So what we would need is something that's similar to the CRA to justify. We would have to have, you know, a log, a log of hours that are, that are, you know, she'd have to keep a desktop log and let us know how many hours she's working, and then get her rate per hour and charge that to the, to the water and sewer.
Correct. I mean, I don't know what the hours are that Keesha spends on that. Sure, it's not a whole bunch, but there are times when it does become, I mean, when we have people out in the office and such. I've also had some thoughts about the situation, not necessarily with paying for that wage, but in another way, but looked at the office and how the office is being run or how things are going. And I had thought about making a couple of changes there, but this is early in the year, and I really wanted to get further in the budget and see what things were doing before I took a big step. But with that said, I don't see any reason why the portion of Keesha's job that Keesha does for the water and sewer department shouldn't be paid.
That's all I'm saying. So if, I would say if she can keep a log and justify, and I know when I talk to her, she's always booked with doing building permits or code enforcement and that kind of thing. So that if she can do that and help justify it, then I don't have a problem with it either.
Well, that's, I mean, we need to justify? That's not my suggestion, and my thought there is to do that. And I'm not suggesting to do anything that we can't legally do.
That's right.
But what we can legally do, I think it would be, it would be an advantageous move.
Well, yeah, it could help, it could help some, a few thousand dollars. All right. So do we have anything else? Do we want to make any reditions on this, on this water and sewer budget? Or are we going to accept it as proposed, or what do you think?
I'm going to accept it as proposed.
All right. That's very good, but we're in a workshop. Does everyone agree? Okay. All right, we're fine. And, thank you. Well, thank you, sir. What we can do, we're going to, we may have another workshop, we may not, but we can certainly think about it. If you have other comments, call Charlie, call Courtney, Keesha. And then if we don't have another workshop, you can speak about it at the tentative budget hearing as well. Okay? All right?
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate it. Okay, then. We'll move on forward to the general fund. That went pretty quick. Okay, you have the budget that Ms. Keesha presented to you?
Yes.
Showing the nine mils. And I will say, I did come in and review this in depth with Keesha on Monday afternoon. And we had a generous surplus starting out at somewhere around $89,000. And we did some little reallocation, and we still have a generous surplus at $51,000. So I went home, did some serious contemplation. We've been at nine mils since 2015, excuse me, 2014, 15 budget. Four years. We've got, we've got a surplus, and I think that we can, we can, should consider lowering the millage rate. I ran some numbers. I'm going to ask Keesha to print out one of these for everyone. I did some numbers at 8.71, 8.5, and 8.25, just to give you all some idea.
You need all the sheets?
Yes. Well, it's not water and sewer.
Okay.
Just to give you all an idea, a good look at what can happen if you lower the millage rate. And I think that we need to give that some serious, you know, we need, we need to be able to look at some alternatives other than just, we have a, the rollback rate is 8.71, and there's no reason why we can't consider that. And actually, if you go ahead and take a look at some of these numbers, we might be able to go 8.5. And if we really tightened our belts, we could go 8.25. But it just depends upon, you know, the commission. And meanwhile, our revenues, our general fund revenues at nine mils, $990,000. Haven't seen that in a long time. Franchise fee, $105,000. Utility service taxes, estimated $65,000. Professional occupational license at $5,000. State right-of-way maintenance up this year at $7,100. State revenue sharing up from $55,000 to $65,000. Local home tax, that's not coming in like we thought, like Ms. Keesha thought. Alcohol beverage license, $2,000. Local home tax, $200. State sales tax up from $95,000 to $100,000. Local communication services, $45,000. Building permits, $6,000. Fines, like traffic, traffic fines, code enforcement, $1,500. And notary service, Ms. Keesha says they don't mind paying the $10 fee. So that's not, that's not bad. Interest earnings, $2,800. Rent royalties, $40,000. And I discussed it with Ms. Keesha and Ms. Courtney. We're not planning on, we're not going to count our chickens before they hatch on the industrial building rent just yet. If we get that, that will be icing on the cake. Cemetery lots, about $2,000. And other miscellaneous revenues, $7,000. So our total estimated receipts at 0.9 mils is $1,444,300. $1,444,300, less 5%, $72,215. Our estimated receipts at nine mils is $1,372,850. And then our, so we're not, we're not dealing with balance books right now. So here, you'll take a look at your 8.71. All the numbers are the same except the agglorum tax, which that takes down to $960,000 from the $990. And your total estimated receipts and balances, minus your 5%, will be $1,343,585 versus at nine mils, $1,372,850. If you go, if you go to your 8.5 mils, that reduces your, your agglorum tax to $935,000. And all of the other numbers are the same except for your less 5%. That's, that goes down because your, your rates are going down, and that takes you $1,319,835. And if you were really to tighten your belt and go to 8.25, which we have not been to 8.27 since the 2011-12 budget, that's $908,000. And that, you're less your 5%, and that takes you down to a total of revenues and receipts of $1,294,185. That's just to kind of give you a look, different breakdowns. So now we have the commission. So now we have the commission. And the commission is basically the same here, forty-two thousand. It's the same on all. Now, you know, we are, we are giving some reimbursements that we have a finding on our financial statement that's about seven thousand dollars there on life and health. On the administration, we have, the numbers are, they're a little bit different than what I have written in on these. We've got, you've got proposed at nine mils salaries, a hundred thousand, FICA eight, thirteen two for retirement, twenty-three, two hundred. Life and health accounting, forty thousand. That's all the same. Training, two. Travel, five. Ten thousand dollars for communications, one thousand dollars for postage, eighteen thousand for utilities. That's gonna be, you know, these are gonna be the same across the board. Two thousand for the coffee machine lease. Workers' comp, six hundred and fifty. Liability, four thousand, six thousand, five hundred for the property. Two thousand for maintenance and repair of equipment, which would be our air conditioning. Maintenance and building repairs. Now, in the beginning, when I talked with Keisha, fifteen thousand dollars. But that's putting more soundproofing. This building needs gutters. We may need storage for items at the, items that come out of the old city hall. We, I don't, I can't remember if it was this year or last, we overspent on this one because we maintain the two museums as well. And that's, that's part of our utility cost and that is not included in the utility cost that goes to water and sewer. We spend seven to eight thousand a year on utilities for each museum. But if they have a problem, then we have to maintain the museums out of, out of this budget here, this line item. As well, the post office has asked for some maintenance, almost like major maintenance over there. Advertising, twenty-five hundred. Code enforcement, twelve there on the nine, on the nine mils that Ms. Keisha presented. I put fourteen, but then you say I've got twelve and thirteen five going out for the different millage rates. I'm sure all of you got the letter today. I hope you did. Did y'all get the letter today from Mr. Michael Marone?
You mean the email?
Yes, sir.
No, I haven't seen it. I think I knew where you're going, but was it the meeting?
And that would be under code enforcement. And I'll just basically read the, the main gist there. The board, Franklin County Board of County Commissioners is requesting that, and it was sent to Ms. Courtney and Mr. Ron Nally. The board is requesting that if each city would like the county's animal control officer to continue to patrol and respond to city calls, you agree to split the cost to the part-time officer, seven thousand dollars per city. And I agree to a memorandum of understanding that will include language, that a city police officer will respond with the animal control officer to each animal complaint call. Did you hear that, Chief?
If we're not on other stuff, good. But we can't go away, take away from more important situations, go to every animal complaint.
So, you know, this is something we're gonna have to address. And if Ms. Keisha says this would go under code enforcement. So I knew that we were already going to be addressing code enforcement for the ordinance, the ordinance one ninety-nine and leash law. We're gonna be having a workshop in October. Don't know what that's gonna cost, but now we have an idea. Just probably to get the same service that we were getting. Yes, sir.
So they're asking for law enforcement to go, officer to go to every call?
Agree to a memorandum of understanding that will include language, that a city police officer will respond with the animal control officer to each animal complaint call.
I would say to you in the meeting and that's what they said.
When they go to other calls that's not in the city, they don't have an officer go with them on everyone.
Maybe they get a deputy.
What is the point now?
I don't know. I have no idea. I have not talked to anyone. You haven't followed, been able to follow up on this, have you?
No, you just said if we had any questions. I told him we had a meeting, a workshop tonight and we bring it up and if he had any questions to play.
Now, is that code enforcement figure you got here, twelve? And I think the mayor said she had fourteen. Does that include that seven?
The, the, the twelve did not really. I mean, but we were thinking that if we put seamless gutters, you know, that's gonna cost some money. More soundproofing?
No, and code enforcement.
Oh, code enforcement, excuse me. Code enforcement.
Well, we were thinking five in the beginning and that they was requesting five thousand.
Yeah, that's what we were thinking. They were gonna request five thousand.
I see.
So code enforcement. Now, we, we generally have five thousand because we use that to, when buildings are condemned, we have to pay, you know, some contractor to take down the buildings and tipping fee. And a building was just taken down on Thirbe, Three Rivers, but I don't believe the tipping fee was, was charged. But we're considering another building at the corner of Three Rivers in Bragton. And Mr. Bond has told me the tipping fee's gonna be about sixteen hundred dollars on that one. And at one point, when I got that today, I just said, well, heck, we'll just get our own part-time code enforcer, but we don't have a place to keep the dogs.
No.
Okay. Yes, we don't have a place to keep the dogs.
Well, that's not the only thing.
I know. We, we need a truck, a cage and...
Have to feed them.
Yeah, food.
Yeah, we can't do that except that.
No.
No, we have to, we have to...
We would need compliance.
Rethink about, you know, a real code enforcement person, you know, now you're talking. We've already, Keisha's priced out a person for streets and roads at forty, so that's probably what you'd be looking at, forty, because they'd need a vehicle and a cage. But we'd need, we'd need, you know, somewhere to keep these dogs.
Yeah, at this point.
And chickens.
I don't see that feasible at this point.
And then I wanna know, is this hard time that we're paying for only gonna be in the city, Caraville, City of Appalachia?
I honestly...
That would be up to the City of Appalachia on what they do.
Well, I mean, if we both went in and split the call.
Split the call.
Well, what happens if, you know, we have a lot of questions. If there's a dog call here in Caraville and a dog call in Appalachia at the same hour, how, how will that work? And the dogs aren't gonna stay waiting there for you to come get them.
Because they cover countywide.
Yes.
That's what county does. That's what I'm following.
But this doesn't seem like...
Which says your city, we're in Homero's, that's why we're not part of that.
I guess so. At one point, I thought five thousand was going to increase the patrol.
Right. And that was, that's what my understanding was, to increase the patrol that our part-time and that the patrol would be increased.
If we don't pay them seven thousand, we won't have code animal control at all.
We won't, we won't...
You know, I think that's a little ridiculous.
We won't have an animal control officer.
Cities have to pay. But if you live on Alligator, Portland, or St. George Island, you get your dog catched in the park. That isn't something ain't right here. We pay county taxes. I, I live in this county. I pay the taxes. I deserve animal control officer just as much as...
Now, does anybody have to see the portion of the city taxpayers' money that goes down to control?
A portion of it does go, we don't know. It just came today, this morning. So, you know, the staff can call to Ms. Aaron over at the county and ask, what is the portion that goes, of Caraville's taxes that goes to the percentage, to the dog and bull? And, you know, they may not have it out, you know, like that because it's under solid waste. It's under, you know, one budget solid waste.
It is.
So they may not have it, you know, spread, spread out that, that...
But we have an agreement for tipping fees with the landfill that we give them free water and they give us free tipping fees.
Okay.
So that port, that, that agreement's separate from the animal control. So that's why we get, because we give them free water at their park.
Do we have that in writing?
We haven't been able to locate it.
Do we need to get that in writing?
Certainly do.
Like a, as he says, a memorandum of understanding?
I think the chief had a good point too about, does a police officer go with every county call? Why would, why would they require the city to do that if the, if the county doesn't do it?
Okay. I don't know.
My, my opinion is, I don't know how the county does it either, but the county's ordinance and the city's ordinance, the animal control officer doesn't have any authority for violations and so forth. Only the police officer does.
Well, we can appoint anybody who enforces our ordinances. We can appoint the animal control to be our enforcement officer for that. Just like I'm appointed as the head enforcement officer.
I, I don't know about that.
I think that could be amended in our ordinance and say that Franklin County Animal Control is enforcing this ordinance.
You know, I just, I, I don't know what to say. I mean, I don't know where to go, how much to, I, I don't want to be without dog, animal control.
Right. Hate to say it, but the simple way out is to pay the seven thousand dollars. That's the simple way out.
I know.
The complicated way, I don't know. I don't have the answers to.
And code enforcement was, you know, we, we talked about raising that because there are several houses that need to be managed. I don't know if y'all see, this is a lighter side. Forgot to post Paddlesports. She's all cleaned up and everything, right? So do we wanna come back to that one? Let's think about it a minute or two while we just move on down the line.
I don't believe we're gonna have an answer to that.
I know.
I, I don't, I think the only answer we gonna have is the, is the easy way out at this point. I don't think we're prepared to do anything different.
But would you, so, you know, would you add the seven to the five? So let's go on down and take a look at everything and see what we have. And, and, you know, let's take a look at it. So other charges and obligations, three thousand. Clerical, one hundred. Codification, fifteen hundred, excuse me, five hundred. Supplies and ops materials, twenty-five hundred. Gasoline, fifteen hundred. No, excuse me. Supplies, supplies, just materials, supplies and materials, fifteen hundred. No gasoline. We, we're not sure about elections. I had question marks and Keisha had six thousand and I said, well, that's not quite right. So we don't know if they're gonna charge. If Keisha does not do anything for the elections, there's gonna be a little bit of a charge, but we don't know exactly how much yet. Then, community celebrations, excuse me, books and publications, thirty-five hundred. Community celebrations, that's our fireworks, five hundred and fifty. Legal counsel, thirty...
Five thousand, five hundred.
Yes, sir, that's five thousand, five hundred. And thank you. Legal counsel, thirty thousand. Website, six hundred and fifty. Uniforms, five hundred. Planning, five thousand. Consultant fee, ten thousand. Now, here we go, here's another one. The HR firm, we're going to be interviewing HR firms. I know two of them have applied or replied to the request for proposal. We put ten thousand there, just looking at one or two, both of those, excuse me, twelve. Might have to piecemeal it out. You might have to go and do, you know, just one thing a year. Let them analyze the personnel policy the first year and do the wage and salaries the second year, do the training the third year, you know, or, or something. We may have to do that. We may not be able to do it every, you know, one bulk. You see, I, I reduced the rate, millage rate to... Can't find my first page here. Eight point seven one. I have ten thousand. Eight point five oh. I have zero. You know, we might decide after interviewing them that we, we don't wanna do it at all, Campford it. And at eight point two five, I have twelve thousand. So this is a line item where we can, we can work on this one and kind of decide, you know, what we think we wanna do versus our millage rate. Dixie Youth League, all of these here. Dixie Youth League, two thousand. Food pantry, twelve thousand. Campford Johnson, fifteen hundred. Humane Society, a thousand. Library, three thousand. Senior Center, twenty-five hundred. Senior Cent, the services, twenty-five hundred. Youth fishing tournament, that comes to twenty-five thousand dollars. Those, twenty-five thousand.
Oh, okay. Where's your Humane Society? Would the dogs are there?
Yes.
It's the Franklin County thing. They're a nonprofit organization.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, they don't euthanize. They're, they're pretty good, pretty nice society.
They take care of the creatures?
Oh, all right.
That's where we can take our dogs when we think about it. They're not open twenty-four hours a day, but I suppose you can leave them on the front step like everyone else does.
Throw them out on the street like a lot of them do.
Okay, and then our city hall loan payment, that's pretty much engraved in stone. Total administrative budget, four hundred and twenty-seven thousand. But you can see that can be tweaked if you, you know, there's just some different numbers there. If you, if you lower your millage rate, you can, you can, you know, lower some of your other expenses up there in the administrative side of it and, and bring that down in accordance with lowering your millage rates. Y'all see that? All right. Your police department, salaries at two forty, FICA at eighteen, retirement at sixty thousand, life and health, sixty. Training, fifteen hundred. Communications, eleven hundred, eleven thousand. Workers' comp, six thousand, five hundred. Liability, thirteen thousand, five hundred. Pretty much the same as last year. Automobile, twenty-six hundred. Maintenance and repair of equipment, seven hundred. Repair of vehicles, six thousand. Other charges and obligations, four hundred. Supplies, office equipment, office supplies, one thousand. And materials, supplies, two thousand. Gasoline, twelve thousand, down one thousand dollars. Books and publications, three hundred. Capital projects, fourteen thousand. And that's your, that's vehicle payments. Is that correct? Okay. One?
One.
Okay. Website, a hundred and fifty dollars. Uniforms, two thousand dollars. And their police budget has been the same since, for quite, no, no, it's down from last year. Four hundred and fifty, one thousand, six hundred and fifty. And I, I looked over that trying to see if there was anywhere it could be cut. I just don't see it. So even with your different millage rates as they tear down, I don't see, you know, how we can cut the police department. Fire is the same across the board since, since last year and across the board on tearing down your, your millage rates. Seven thousand for fireman's services. The firemen get paid a fee, a stipend each time they go out to the fire. Not much, twenty-five dollars. Communications, two thousand, seven hundred. Utilities, two thousand, five hundred. Workers' comp, eight hundred and fifty. Liability, six thousand. Property, fifteen hundred. Automobile, insurance, fifteen hundred. Maintenance and repair of vehicles, twenty-five hundred. Maintenance and repair of their building, five hundred. Supplies and material, five hundred. Gasoline, one thousand. Excuse me, they don't, they don't... Excuse me, they don't, they don't, is that diesel?
It's our one together.
Okay. And then first responders, 2,000. So, that's 28,550. And I don't see how that one can be cut either with lowering your millage rates. Your streets and roads, okay. Now, Keisha, you see right there, under your 2018, 2019, 83,000. That's your, that's your proposed budget. And Ms. Keisha put hers to the side. If we hire an extra employee, the proposed budget would be that amount from the smaller numbers to the side. I went ahead and added my amount, which is 40,000, we're estimating, right on the top of the, of the column there, so it adds up down at the bottom. So, you can see clearly what, what if you do if you, if you hire another employee. So, 83,000 of the normal salaries there, 6,000 for your janitorial, that's our weekend holiday cleanup contract, 6,100 for FICA, retirement, 3,100. Life and health, 7,500. Communications, 1,000. Utilities, 60,000. And that pays our street lights and water bills for the parks and some landscaping, cemetery, water, that type of thing. All right. Workman's comp, 5,000. Liability, 1,500. Property, 5,000. Automobile, 2,000. Maintenance and equipment, 7,000. Maintenance and repair of vehicles, 5,000. Maintenance and repair of buildings, 1,500. Signage, 2,000. And equipment purchase, we have 18,000 there. With the, you've got a copy of Mr. Justin Dustin, Capital Projects. If, if another employee comes on board, you know, now, you said he could use Mr. Dustin, the Sierra, the old, the old truck, or is that correct?
And actually, Gary offered, he's got a surplus explorer. The silver explorer.
The silver explorer, all right. So, and you need a bobcat pro, that's the zero turn?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and then you'd need a trailer and a saw and, and a back, a blower of some sort. So, and then the bush hog, that is to go behind your backhoe?
No, ma'am, that's, that's the old Massey Ferguson, that's to go behind, yeah.
You're going to run that Massey Ferguson?
Yes, ma'am.
Is it in order?
It should be, yes, ma'am. Well, it's not in my department.
I know it, I'm aware of it. And does it have a decent seat on it? You know, last time I saw it, the seat was chewed up. I mean, there was no cushion.
We longed it to the order source. I had to went out there and took a look at it. But that was the plan, if it is in order to buy the bush hog, just put on the backhoe it. Bush hog, same time.
Are you going to repair the backhoe?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, that, that is 18,000 for that equipment purchase and that's the 18,000 that we have there. Does that leave you any money to buy any, anything other equipment that might break?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And we have seven in maintenance and repair equipment.
Yes, ma'am.
And five in vehicles and 12 in materials. And the bush hog's kind of just optional. There was different options we talked about, so.
Well, he'll have to have one if he runs a tractor.
And then your, your gasoline at 6,000, your diesel at 300 is what we originally had, but I agree with upping that to 1,000. And your, your safety at 500 and uniforms at 2,000 and stormwater maintenance at 4,000. So, without the employee, or excuse me, with the employee, it's 244,000. Yeah, well, you haven't added the employee there.
Two, eight, two.
I see it. Two, eight, two, and I've got two, eighty-three, 500, so two, eighty-two, nine hundred, so basically 283,000 dollars with an employee. And then I, I showed what it would cost here. It's going to be basically the same on the, on the 8.5 millage rate, but if you, if you go with the 8.25 millage rate, you're not going to be able to have an employee and your, your capital projects would come down to the normal 15 and your supplies and materials to 10 because you wouldn't need to outfit a new employee. And so, that would take you down to the 239,200 because the salaries have gone up some in streets and roads. So, that's, that's a decision we're going to have to make here today, whether or not, certainly we can't vote on it, but do we, do we want to hire an employee? And we'll continue taking a look. Total estimated expenditures, what we have, we put, we've got for cemetery, our total estimated expenditures right now, all of the departments, 1 million, 193, 750. And you can see the difference there as your millage rates tear down. You can see that there's a little bit difference as your rates tear down. But I have included the 40,000 in my, my rates there. This 1 million, 193, 750, under the nine, because that, that does not include the 40,000.
No, because I didn't know if everybody was going to agree on it, so that's off to the side.
Okay. And I don't know either. So, anyway, but you can get a better idea of what it's going, what the total expenditures would be on my spreadsheet, on the two that at least I put 40 in there and the money to outfit. Then we, we talked about, Keisha said that the cemetery hadn't been funded in a long time. Camping, 15,000. Then if you lower your millage rates, you're going to need to lower that cemetery reserve. You see, I'm showing that to be 5,000. If you go ahead and lower your millage rate some more, there won't be money for cemetery reserve. CRA district is 112 based on what was paid last year. And that gives you total expenditures of 1 million, 320, 750 dollars. 1 million, 320,000, 750 without the new employee. And then you have, you can kind of get a guesstimate. If you, if you lower your millage rates, you're going to have to lower your expenditures. And down to right there at 8.25, with no employee, your total expenditures would be 1 million, 293,750. And then I did show, Keisha's showing a surplus with the nine at 51,335, and that does not include the employee, which you'd have to add another 40 and that would take it down to 41,000. And then I'm showing a surplus with the 8.71 and a deficit of basically 4,000, 8.50. So, if you wanted to go 8.50, we need to go back up and do some more deducting. And then without the employee at 8.25, there's 435 dollar surplus. So, we need to go back and think about, talk about the employee, the HR firm, and code enforcement.
And cemetery.
Cemetery. So, I have talked to Dustin about the cemetery, Isle of Rest. It's at the gateway to the eastern side of the city. The fencing is in disarray. It's always torn up. Mr. Dustin says it needs to be completely replaced to really get it done right. I don't know what that would cost.
I could get some process. I'd like to go with a different type of wood so that it'll last a little longer. Just looking something a little different than what we put up there. I'd just see cross and color that.
Maybe something a little more sturdy or?
Yeah, something that'll last a little longer.
That the bears can't take apart. Bears, like, can't take apart that split rail business.
They do.
So, there you go. Food for thought. We can, we can think about it, come back next week if you want, and go ahead and talk about the airport and the CRA budget, which we've got much to talk about on the CRA. I would, I would propose for a millage rate cut.
I don't think the Titan Fair is having a problem with it.
We need to rework our budget a little bit.
We do have a high millage rate.
It's one of the highest in the state, but it's not, yeah.
Most small counties are.
It's not as high as Appalachia.
Exactly. There are millage rates that are a little higher.
I worry about going down too far because if we have, next year, if we have to go back up, that's when you have to do that advertisement for the tax increase, that's when they're used to the amount across the board. So, I, I mean, and the cut's good, but just not too much of a cut. That's maybe a rollback.
But if we, if we stay at nine, of course, you know, the newspaper, Concerned Citizens will say we've raised the taxes because we are, we have, we have raised the taxes because the property values went up.
We have raised the taxes, but property values.
Right, the property values went up, but if we leave it at nine, we will have raised the taxes.
We have, the property values will help increase the monetary part, but the millage rate will be the same.
The millage rate will be the same, but people will be paying more taxes.
Take the dollar away because of the increase of age.
I see that on my tax statement I got last week.
It's not that much, really. For me, it's like $10 or something. I'm not just pitch property. But if you're looking at the moorings or some, some places like that, now we're talking about some taxes and that's what supports this. But yes, they will, they will say, they're not going to say, oh, my property value increased. They're going to say that we raised the taxes because we didn't lower the millage rate to the rollback rate to coincide with what they have been paying. Rollback rate is 8.71. And we've got the HR firm to deal with, cemetery, if we want a new employee and outfitting a new employee. Code enforcement.
Just my opinion.
Maintenance and repair buildings, too, that can't go down.
My opinion, in here only two years, there are fellow youth folks over there have a lot more time than I do. Anytime you drop millages, it's okay, it's good. But two years I've been here, we've been kind of hamstrung in process. We're at a point without raising the millage rate. And if we leave it the same, we're at a point where we can do some of the things for the citizens to care about. Several things. So, that's one thought. And that's kind of the way I'm looking at it as an overall picture.
Well, I have thought about that, I did, but, you know, I did some sleeping on it and I think we should at least consider taking it back to the rollback rate. We still have surplus on a rollback rate. We have, we don't.
Do you have the, the actual numbers on the DR 420?
Yes. And I know you don't have, have what I'm looking at on a, you, do you have it with you?
I don't have the DR 420. I have the DR 420.
I used this right here and calculated that by 8.71 and used this property value, 110,000, $60, 825, and multiplied it by the 8.71 that's on this sheet.
Right.
Which comes to 958,000, but 960.
958 is with the rollback?
That's the rollback. I put 960 on my paper work here.
So, that we're, we're getting more taxes than it's even projecting?
That, well, if you multiply the 8.71 mills by the, by the property value, it's 960,000 in revenue.
So, generally.
Or 958,000.
So, generally, when we budget, we try not to put that whole number in because you never get the whole percentage.
Which is what you did here.
Which is what I get on the nine.
Uh-huh, so the 990 is, you get that, you put the whole percentage there?
No.
Nine, nine mills multiplied by the 110,000 and $60, 825 is not 990?
The nine mills, who knows the access to the levy, is the S. The 990 is the prior year proceeds. So, that's why I use that because that's what we got at nine last year. So, that's not the actual, that's what's the proposing to come in, that I put it at the 990 because we never get that.
So, you're saying at the 8.71 that we shouldn't lower that?
Well, if we, if we use the 8.71, we shouldn't use 960.
Right.
It would probably be more, more like 925 is what you would need to budget your number base.
So, you could look over at the 8.5 and kind of see that 935 over there.
Right, right. So, we don't use that whole number. The 5% pretty much goes to the county. They collect a fee for processing our taxes. And then the, the rest of it, we never put the full amount that, that the proposing that we get in because we never do get that amount in.
Well, we need to decide do we want to hire an employee? That's, that's the big, big ticket item. Dustin. Tell me what y'all think.
I will hear Dustin's opinion. Yeah, that's what I'm running past him. He's the man running the department. We don't pay him. You, you tell us what you need or don't need.
Say your name for the record.
My name's Justin, but I'm the supervisor of the street and roads department. See if I see it.
I believe we know.
My opinion is, we need another guy. I worked with Jared for two years, me, Jared, we was our supervisor for two years, I worked with him. It was great. It went a lot smoother than with three people. It does with two. Now, I've been about three years with just two. It's kind of gets heavy every once in a while, but we can do it. I mean, it ain't like it's impossible, but I'd love to have the third man at the back, so.
And I also, yeah, and it's even worse with the DOC.
It is not the inherent, it's even worse.
And actually, the water and sewer department has been doing the airport and so.
And also, the CRA has added to the workload. If y'all remember the workshop.
Yes, I understand. And I have often thought that we need an extra person because our one person is so senior, he has a lot of time off.
Let's hire somebody then.
So.
That's my opinion.
I'll go along with Mr. Frank, but I got one thing I want to put in here. We going to hire a new employee, I have no problem with it, but let's don't put him out there in a no war I P. vehicle. It's, the surplus. We gonna hire a new employee, I have no problem with it, but let's don't put him out there in a no war IP vehicle that's goes, the surplus, please be hit, when you hook up, eighteen foot trailer behind it, put lawnmowers on it, inmates in it, that transportation's gonna be gone in a year. If we gonna hire an employee, let's give him what he needs to work with. Uh, we can get a new truck, give it to the supervisor, give his truck to the new employee. Uh, I don't, Dusty has sent out air last summer in an old pickup truck with no air conditioning. And all the supervisor does is sets in the truck, follows his inmates down the road. It's a hundred degrees outside, it gets pretty unbearable when I be here telling Dusty. That's all I gotta say, we gonna, we gonna hire, fine, let's give him a vehicle.
Okay, so, um, what is that, ten thousand a year? You budget for a three-year purchase?
Ba, yes, for basic, for the basic truck like we've got.
So, that adds another ten thousand to streets and roads for the next three years. And will our millage rate be able to support that for the next three years? And, and, and further, you're, you're going, you're going forty and ten, and, and, you know, then the capital projects, that's three, two, five, fifty-five, sixty thousand dollars to outfit a new employee. And then, and then next year won't be that mu, will it be about fifty thousand? We're gonna have to keep their equipment out, so it's gonna be about that much.
I, I just hate to see us putting another employee out in a vehicle, we gonna constantly have broke down. We got one, what, sitting out here now, the old Dodge van that we can surplus, we don't even use it no more.
You don't, you don't think a police explorer would last at least a year?
Ask Mr., Mr.
Does air conditioning work in it, Gary?
Air conditioner works, it needs a battery, it had a leak in the roof that I put, I picked where they run the wires from the blue light. And I packed it up.
I know Jared had one of the old surpluses and he used it.
I used it for you.
Those vehicles are not made to pull, that kinda wait around, but.
It will.
I, I pulled a trailer plate in, I mean, like you said, it's not really made to pull.
Well, I was just thinking that we wouldn't have to buy the trailer and the lawnmower, and if I were to make new next year, and we could budget for a new truck and capital projects.
And the air conditioner does work now with our tan truck, so I mean, it ain't like it gonna be without air conditioner, I got it fixed.
I was gonna say.
And it works, but it's in running order.
Well, that's the reason we have a board here, we'll decide when we need to. I have no problem with the boy, I just, I hate to put one out there, we don't give him what he needs to work with.
I agree, you don't wanna be put out there.
That's all.
And now, the bush hog, you know, we don't know what, we might get a bush hog or plan for that at thirty-five hundred, but we don't know what we're looking at for a tractor, for real.
For real.
For real, I mean, uh, that hasn't been totally researched yet, has it?
Not in depth, no, no.
You know, so that could go toward the first ten thousand dollar payment, don't know if there's any other stuff we could find, but of course, you know, if you're gonna leave your mill at nine, you got plenty of money to, to play around with.
Dust, we go on.
Can you, can you lower it between the nine and the rollback?
Dustin, why?
But, uh, it, I mean, it's very minimal.
I know it.
And I wish I'd have known, because I'd have had it loaded, then I could, I could've done through the numbers like that. But my point is, is if you're doing the rollback, then you have to go lower than that.
Yes, I understand, okay.
Yes, sir. Uh, why don't we know about the tractors?
Well, to be honest with you, I've seen Randy driving it down the road, so I, I, I know it's an operational kind of, I mean, he can, he runs it just about at least once a week, I've seen him already, so. But as far as me, I haven't went out there and drove it myself, so I can't say, yes, because I've, you know.
But the point I'm trying to make is proving that it's operational.
Without a doubt.
Yes.
I was, I, without a doubt, I believe in it. Uh, as far as pulling a bush hog, you know, I don't know, but I'm pretty sure it's running a full bush hog.
Full bush hog.
Does it, now I'm gonna ask you this again, because the last time I saw that thing, it did, but Randy couldn't be riding it without sun.
No, I believe so, I don't believe that.
We can buy him a seat if he needs it.
But they aren't cheap either, tractor seats are not cheap. So.
An apple crate.
Yeah.
Buy it on the boat.
I mean, there's money there to do it with, if you're gonna stay at nine. At nine mills.
Well, I think if we wanna provide this service to our citizens, we just gonna have to leave it like it is. I'm like you, I would love to cut it, but it's one of them deals, if you want the service, you gotta pay for it. I like to see my roads cut, Dusty, it look good.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Well, we got the cemetery reserve, the HR money, and the, the surplus money at the end of the budget, so. What, have you seen, what are the quotes on the HR? Have you seen anything?
One is the, one is the retainage and the set fee, and, and they want yearly, this is yearly, um, the other one's a hundred and fifty dollars an hour. And then we haven't had a call with them yet, so one of the questions that we have is, how many hours do they anticipate it to take? It's a hundred and fifty dollars an hour.
How to, when we need to use, I mean, that's key. Is it just when we have issues with our employees, or, or will it be?
Well, we need them initially to come in and look at the personnel policy and a pay, and a pay schedule.
I agree with you there.
And look at the personnel policy and make recommendations as to what we need to change, or, or things that they think we need to include that aren't included now. After that, you may not use them as often, and you also have other places, like the Florida League of Cities, that you can call and get information.
Well, I'm just trying to say, we'd be better off with a hundred and fifty dollar an hour, or just paying the flat fee.
Yeah, 'cause we send, we, we send it out for five companies, so that's always true.
We're gonna have to determine what each company is, is, uh, projecting in time of that hundred and fifty dollars an hour, it can get pretty expensive with a hundred and fifty dollars an hour. You take one day, then I would.
Well, I guess, we might benefit.
I think, what do we say, it would take forty hours.
I think twelve thousand would fund eighty hours.
Yeah, we might benefit.
Twelve thousand would fund eighty hours, but anyway, we're getting on something else other than the streets and roads.
Dustin, we appreciate that.
Thank you, Dustin.
Okay, so I'm going to the column L there for your streets and roads, and that's, that's your total for all, for the new employee and the, and, and everything else, right? Column L. And, uh, I, for maintenance of vehicles, um, uh, any, any equipment or whatever there, I, I up that to, to five thousand, let's see, you had it at five thousand?
I, I did have it at five thousand, it didn't carry over for some reason.
Then you took it four. Okay, so that needs to be, that needs to be five in that column L.
You know, we also added extra to janitorial, um, there, that if we possibly had a third employee, like if, help related.
All right, um, so, uh, taking that up to five, and.
What was that, you changed your bar?
Uh, number forty-six, uh, five, four, forty-six.
The vehicle station.
Uh-huh. And then ten thousand for the vehicle, that's two hundred and ninety-three thousand, nine hundred and thirty-two. Is that right, for streets and roads?
Uh, making the equipment purchase to twenty-eight thousand?
No, ten thousand for, uh, for a payment on the truck.
Let me, let me ask Dustin a question now. Dustin, you made the comment that the old truck has the air conditioning fixed, now, is that, would that hold us a year?
I believe it would.
Yeah, yeah, it'd give us a year. And, uh, get it serviced out of that. I agree, having a decent, decent equipment to work with, but if it, if it services a year, and I've shared with some others, and I'll share it now, the way I foresee that, third person, if it's hired, is a portion of that time for that third person's gonna be on that trash truck and a bush hog.
Yes.
Without a doubt. Because, just as you said earlier, you, you stay with two people, you can get, barely get the job.
I can get it.
But there's a lot of it you're not touching.
There's a lot.
You and I have talked about that.
And with maintenance of traffic certification, we could certainly be mowing the right of ways of the ninety-eight that the CRA district doesn't cover.
So if we can get by with that vehicle for a year, it'd help out a little bit.
But you can, you can afford it if you stay at nine mills. You can afford it. And if you, if you can afford it this year, if you're gonna stay at nine, you may as well go ahead and buy the bullet now and get it, you might not be able to afford it in the years to come.
I'm thinking in advance is, uh, that'll put all three of the vehicles pretty close together in, in their age, and that could create all three of them start and go out at the same time.
It could, what, tell me about your vehicles, Mr. Dustin.
The ones we're driving now are in good shape.
What's their ages?
Man?
How old are they?
Well, I think it's two thousand sixteen's.
Yeah.
Both of them?
So if you stagger, if you stagger the ages of them, then in the future, when you fail and.
Is the water department's doing your trucks?
One, you crank trucks.
One, one of them.
Yeah, that'd be expensive.
Because we're still paying them two payments. I believe one of his will be paid for next year. His white truck.
The first one.
The first one should be paid for next year, and then the next year, the second one will be paid for.
And then that way you have a rotation going.
All right, I'm gonna let you all decide. What do y'all think? You wanna do truck or not?
I'm just sharing my experience and what I, what I see, and everybody else has, has their.
Hey, Mr. Cal, Frank, got just as much in this as I do.
If we need it, I think we're gonna get it.
I'm for new, but that's my opinion.
Let's go, let's get a new one.
I mean, it's been three years apart.
Right.
Whether the two thousand in twenty will be.
Four years.
It's four years.
Let's, let's vote, who won't, raise your hand if you want to put the ten thousand in for the truck. Doesn't matter to me, but I'll say yay, okay. Equipment purchase is gonna be twenty-eight thousand.
Dustin win.
Now, that's, new truck goes to supervisor and then.
That's tech, that's normally, yeah, that's how it works.
Same here, gets it.
Yeah.
Gets it fast.
I thought you'd be driving that old Sierra.
That's about our own car.
Everybody's truck, every new employee probably has to drive that.
Yeah, without a doubt. The, the new employee, if we get one, will be jumping into a lot nicer now.
Yes, he will, I agree with you.
And he'll also be getting, if he had, of course, we know he has to pass a background check, so he gets a DOC certified, and that's another two. Is that included in this calculation sphere of discussion?
Miranda gave me the budget, the one oh five thirty-two. I, I don't believe it is.
We wanna put another two thousand on there so we can be safe?
Um, do we wanna leave the janitorial at eight?
I don't know, I, I don't know how, I don't know, I mean, 'cause he works weekends and holidays, is there anything else that he, he works, or were you expecting anything else?
We don't have to be paid out of general funds, we can do the boat ramp fees, that you can have a boat ramp.
So do you pay out the, the rate fees, or out of the two?
Pay out of the general fund to do the bathrooms, but then we started using him to do, to go around and do our boat ramp tickets on, on the weekends and holidays, and that's paid out of the boat ramp.
Okay.
And only in our, um, only in our peak season, because we don't need him here in the winter, we don't need him when there's no traffic out there, so.
And the eight was, you know, if we wanted to hire somebody to do extra, that he's, that's outside of our CRA, that's just not getting done.
Like, yeah.
Right.
You wanna leave that at eight, gentlemen, or take that back to the seven, the six that it has been?
Whatever y'all think.
Well, is it a two thousand dollar increase for?
Yes.
For inmate, inmate?
Yeah.
So as it is now, that's two hundred and ninety-three thousand, nine hundred and thirty-two, um, um, budget for streets and roads, and, and we can expect it to stay at that pretty much over the years, unless there's salary increases and unless something drastic happens, it'd be somewhere two hundred and ninety thousand, two ninety-four or five, somewhere, the three employees and equipment for three employees.
Should be close to it, but we buying new equipment the first year, we shouldn't have to buy new equipment the second year.
Right, but, uh, is, your equipment always has to be replaced?
It does.
I have one question for Dustin. We hire new employees, what does it require that person to have a CBL, right?
CBL, class B.
Yes.
You gonna have to drive that truck?
Yeah, if we're gonna work him in between, he's definitely gonna have to drive that truck at some point, and require the class B CBL, so.
Well, I shared with Dustin, I thought he should be versatile, versatile meaning he should have the CD, well, he's, his physician description calls for a CD.
Yes.
And, uh, the, uh, correction officer's training, where he's versatile, where he can do any job that he's assigned to do.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, he can do, run the tractor.
Are we gonna require them to be inmate certified, or is that something we're gonna send them? Because if we're gonna send them, we, we need to include the two thousand dollars.
We have to pay to have them certified.
We don't have to pay to have them certified, but it's just been a practice to give them the two thousand dollars.
Oh, yeah, 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 that's right, yeah.
Yeah, the, the certification is almost forty hours, isn't it?
Right, and in the past, they gave two thousand dollars for the certification.
Now, when will this job go out from halftime?
When, after we vote on it at budget year.
Okay. You can't hire until the new budget comes out.
Right. So we should have plenty of time to get a great big pool of employees.
With that, requiring those CBLs is, you know, knock a lot of.
Yeah.
Dustin, pick out somebody that'll work.
Yes.
I agree with that.
Every one of ours are writing to me.
I'm waiting to get my CBL.
I know he's not scared of work, for sure.
I can lay right down side eight and sleep. Are you going through that, Mayor?
I have, I have another suggestion to cut some fat, in my opinion.
Okay.
I'd like to toss it out to the board. Uh, and I'll explain to you why. I feel like that our security system here in this building needs to be discontinued. Uh, that's three, almost three thousand dollars a year that we're paying to a security system. And we have our police department that's here virtually twenty-four seven, seven days a week. And this place is lit up at night like Fort Knox. And, uh, I just feel like that we're not giving the fame for our buck on eighty-three thousand dollars a year for our security system, that if it goes off, they're gonna call the police officer.
Well, that's fine with me, I don't have a problem with it.
I talked with the chief about it today, and he kinda concurs with that idea. We've got, well, fourteen cameras in this building. If someone comes in, if they were to, which I don't think they are with us having a police department here and they're in and out of here all night.
By now, they know, not only do we have cameras inside, we got, we have cameras outside.
I agree, that's a good idea.
And we don't need cash.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
We have two hundred dollars in.
That makes sense.
Now, uh, we'll, uh, you'll still have your security on your interior doors, though, right?
Right, so you couldn't get in there anyway unless you break the door, I know.
Yeah, but that, I mean, yeah, you can do that. So, that's not hard, um, no.
Good point.
But that's my idea.
Okay.
And that, that saves like twenty-seven hundred dollars and some change.
Yes. Sounds good.
Okay. So on your utilities, and that's on the utility cost, right? Can you bring that down? Three thousand dollars? Is that right? Ms. Gordon?
Well, we figured today, what, twenty-seven hundred and some odd dollars.
Two hundred, it's. I think it's three hundred and twenty.
Well, would you wanna leave that at eighteen anyway? I mean, it's, it's, it's a little bit of money. Three, three thousand is something, but it's... When you're looking at the overall budget, it's not that much and we don't know. We're, we haven't even been in here a year yet. And we don't know what's gonna happen with the, the museums either.
That's, that's, that's one layer right there.
I know, the, the museum electric is more than it is here at this building, even now with the new air conditioner.
Yeah.
Really?
Ms. Tarn, I, I have a question about that real quick, not to get off track.
Yes, sir.
Everything's okay?
Yes, sir.
Is that upstairs, air conditioner running as well?
It's running on an extremely low temperature.
Extremely low, low temperature or high?
I mean, high temperature, I'm sorry. I always get that back. It's like up, it's like an eighty.
Okay. Those two new air conditioners, I thought, I'm like everybody else, I thought the cost would go down some with new air conditioner.
I did too. And I didn't, and I don't know because I don't get feedback. I don't know what, what it did, whether it went up or whether it didn't go up, but...
It's an old building.
But we, we put in twenty inches of insulation in the ceiling, which should've made more difference actually than changing the, um, you know, the machines out. But we're running it at very, just enough to keep the humidity, well, from growing mildew upstairs, you know?
Yeah.
And I, have, have we looked into the issues of, you know, that light bill is connected, Lulu's is on that light bill. And so is it possible that the restaurant is cooking and they're running, they're, they're running?
That's true, that's true. Lulu's is on that.
Not only are they running the, the AC. Yeah, they're running the AC that, that is on in the building, but then they, they installed, uh...
Ovens.
Well, no, an oven, yes, lots of ovens. But they installed their own internal air conditioner, the kind like you had over at...
Yeah, like we had at City Hall.
Like, yeah, at City Hall, they've got one of those and another kind of unit that run along with the ovens, the refrigerators, coolers.
That explains it. I didn't realize that it was on there.
I really...
That explains showing them.
Yes.
I would really love it if we could separate those things out because then I think we'd have a real sense of what we're...
I mean, you'd probably be talking over two hundred dollars a month difference.
We keep our, um, we keep, we don't keep the place cold at all. We keep it, I mean, keep it, it's on a programmable, both store, both floors on a programmable thermostat. So we have it programmed not to be cooled, uh, on Monday and Tuesday when we're not there.
After, they're only open twenty hours a week, right?
Well, no, no, we're open, um, thirty hours a week. Isn't that, that how much we have to be open? We're open one hour more than what's required. So I think we're open thirty-one hours a week. And, but it's Wednesday afternoon, basically all day Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and then Sunday afternoon.
Well, you're pretty much twenty.
But when we go home, you know, when we go home on, on the weekend and we turn off all the office, we, we shut down all the computers and all that. But the pro, the thermostat shouldn't, shouldn't be, I mean, that alone should've made a huge difference. So I, I just wondered if it's not, um...
What would it cost to put a meter on that building?
I wouldn't think more than a thousand dollars just to install a meter because the wires are already separated out, so you would just put it's on metering.
If you're gonna, if you're gonna continue to rent that space in the future, it might be best to just get it off, off the museum in the first place. And then the next tenant pays their own electric bill and something like that.
Oh, well, there you go, back up there to buildings maintenance.
You gonna wear that little roller out?
No, I, it's worn out. I wore this computer out and it won't even get wifi anymore, so. Buildings maintenance, we have fifteen thousand. She, she's up there pretty good. And that would be sufficient to get a new meter. New meter.
Now, we got a new meter, would we require Lulu's to set up her own account?
Yes, pay her own way. I mean, well, she, she just pays rent, no light bill, quarter bill, nothing.
Like four hundred a month, right? She pays her own water bill. And I think it says they're on utilities, but because it wasn't split out, we really could...
That's a pretty good bargain there.
It is, yes.
You got a business in the...
Now, she's been in business about a year and a half, right?
Now, we should renegotiate the lease too.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you'd probably have to do that if you did that.
She's had time to ramp up. Uh, you could go ahead. Now, that power pole and all that takes a while. Sometimes, I, I know for the parking lot, triangle parking lot, it took like two months.
There's, there's a power pole. There's a new power pole back there.
There's more wire back there in Spiders there.
The pole was there. It was getting the light.
It can be attached to the meter base.
So we could, we could order it. It's not gonna happen overnight. Go ahead and give them a notice, let them know, you know, they're gonna be getting their own meter. Do they, we wanna renegotiate or do they just wanna pay their bill, you know, whatever. If we leave the maintenance and repair buildings at fifteen thousand, you know, we'll have money for that. We'll be able to get soundproofing, more soundproofing in here. Soundproofing that they did, are y'all aware of the areas they, they did soundproof? Was, uh...
Yes.
Twenty-five hundred, I believe. I had that around here somewhere.
Did he add another three to finish up Carrie's coffee?
Yeah, I think that's, that was total twenty-five.
Yeah.
I've got it with me.
That soundproofing would add additional insulation as well, would help on the heat and cooling.
So soundproof, and gutters. Now seamless gutters aren't gonna be cheap.
They're the best.
I know it. And they, and, and this building needs it. It's washing out real bad.
Yes, they need it.
Bad, bad. So... All right, so we're hiring a new employee, we're getting a new truck, we're getting a chainsaw and a bush hog, and we're just going hog wild here.
Just real, real weird.
What else do we wanna get? Uh, but now, Kisha, I'm only getting, with what we've just talked about here, not much of a surplus.
And that new employee, we bring that best up.
Well, before the truck, and all these figures are gonna be different. Before the truck came into the picture, adding the new employee was gonna leave a surplus of around eleven thousand dollars. But you added a new truck to the ten thousand, so that takes your surplus down to a thousand.
Right, I got sixteen hundred dollars.
Okay, so I didn't miss a phone. But you add thirty, you add thirty-seven back to it, so we're gonna discontinue one of them. The sonnet truck.
Hey, we could surplus some there.
So code enforcement, then let's talk about code enforcement. What do we wanna do here? That's a headache. I mean, we're, we're pretty much forced to...
We don't have much choice on that.
That's what I was saying. I think we're pretty much forced into that.
I don't agree with what they're doing to us, but then again, we don't have, as a city, we don't have much choice.
I'm not very happy about it.
No, 'cause we already paid taxes to the county for that service. Now we have to pay again, that's just...
The taxpayers are paying this. This is the taxpayers' money that we have to pay again.
Those county employees are county employees. We live in the county, but they got our hands tied. This guy's got his hands tied.
Yes, sir.
Is it, uh, is this a time when we can comment on what you're discussing?
You can comment, please do, please.
Well, from my point of view...
Can you speak into the microphone?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right, so we can hear you. And yes, I'm glad you're here and I'm glad you're staying.
Just from what I've heard, I'd prefer as person, just as a citizen, to keep the mill rate where it is. I think one of the biggest detractions, I love Carabelle, I, I chose it, but it, it's a distraction to not have the code enforcement that we need here. And if, I would rather see that and, you know, with this latest incident with rabies in East Twenty. I don't wanna get behind the curve on that. Uh, so I think things that keep the animals under control. If you walk around this town, there's gotta be dogs running after you. I don't care about the little six and seven pastures, but there's big dogs out there.
I know.
And if they get sick, uh, it's, it's gonna really affect our quality of life. And we have other places where our codes should be enforced, so I'm for, for upping code enforcement and, um, and, uh, keeping the, the millage where it is.
Appreciate you.
Very good, thank you, sir. Okay, now, um, I had, I had asked for code enforcement originally to be at twelve. That was an upping at seven thousand dollars to take care of the... Right, of, you know, whatever we needed to do. But now we have an additional seven thousand dollars on top of that, but I, I know we can't afford that. We've got three thousand from Sonatrol, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't wanna take all of that away from the utilities at this point, maybe, maybe a thousand.
And put it in the code enforcement?
Yes, so make that seventeen for utilities and, um, and then another thirteen for code enforcement.
Does everybody agree with that?
Yes.
Seventeen?
And then put that, that would be thirteen to code enforcement, but, you know, that really only gives us another thousand. Basically, 'cause seven of it's going away.
Well, we really only used not even three this year. And we did, we want, and sometimes those houses they paint and powder on.
Cemetery, fifteen thousand. Are, are we gonna spend that much or...
I was just speaking to Dustin about that. I was asking him, would we use the entire thing or just the front? Because it's wooded all around and it's just dense in the front.
In my opinion, just do the front.
And, and so he thought that was really high for just the front.
Now, what about, uh, and Ms. Cheryl Sanders always, you know, she's wanting the backside of this one because her family's buried evergreen on the backside. What about something like, um, security fencing back there, chain link fencing on the backside?
We did that before, not to block the road off, along it, you know?
I don't believe none of them people gonna get up and leave.
What is happening?
I, I agree with you, Frank.
They're driving four-wheelers.
We did have a problem, four-wheel drive going up the, but somebody has all this big concrete, so they ain't going up those.
That Cheryl had streets and roads department do that before she left.
It helped, yeah. You know, if you catch one of them and put a good fine to him, that'll take care of a lot of that.
That word get around.
And actually, if, if we could really up the code of, uh, the dog, that, that really needs to be up, you know, more than just our regular. The same thing, if you, if you catch a couple of three dogs and fine and put them in, the dogs in the pen, uh, then, then it's gonna stop. It won't take long.
If we give them this money, are we gonna give more service or is it just gonna be...
That'll be a workshop in itself, the memorandum of agreement.
I can see that and, and, and looking at the, the ordinancees we're gonna do in October, we're gonna do a workshop there, so.
We could probably do all of that.
I had a dog growl at me the other day and, and, uh, it, it is, when you go walking up down the street, it's not a real good feeling when you see a dog at high, growling at you. So I'd just like to know that we give them this money, we're gonna get a little better service.
And that is on temporary and they have this position for a year. And like you said, once you start fining them and enforcing them and then the problem stops, they, they don't do the enforcement anymore and we're still paying them a living.
I know, maybe we need to, uh, review it every year, right? Because then that's money to the attorney to, to... Well, like, like I told the...
I think no more than service when we gonna get out the county, if not...
Well, like I told the mayor, we're already paying us sixty thousand dollars.
We're gonna give them money and they ain't gonna change.
We're giving them sixty thousand dollars a year building permit fees. So, I mean, we're, we're giving them money.
But now, I keep saying...
Why can't we, uh...
They paid Mr. Gary.
I don't go visit the proper town, why can't we do our own? Cost more where, where we're gonna keep them. No, I'm talking about the, what Pete's talking about. Oh, 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 we give you sixty thousand dollars for our, our building permits, right, which you just said. That money could go in our...
But then we have to contract. We have to contract building inspector.
And we got the inspector, I didn't care about him.
Well, just, you know, we have to, we can, you know, there's another workshop.
Yeah, that's another topic.
Do we want to, to, uh, you know, see, uh, put out for proposal? I don't know if we have to do request for proposal on that or not.
Then you would advertise it?
Uh-huh. And then, um, have, have someone come and make their, their presentation, whoever it may be, and then we could decide, you know, do we wanna stay?
I think it's something we need to look into. I know it's not nothing to do with this feed, but I'm like, sixty thousand dollars, we feed them, then we have to give them another seven for, uh, animal control.
You're kinda hung there.
Yeah.
At this moment in time, in both areas.
Even in both areas, because if we were to hire our own building inspector and permitting and just go away like when the real estate market...
Well, you would give them a percentage of what you make.
You'd be in trouble.
You'd give them a percentage of what you make on building property.
We discussed, go ahead with the seven thousand to them, but have it set up to where they'd have a deputy to go around, not our chief of police, or our fleet's department following them around to each and every...
The sheriff's office don't go around now, he's wanting to call with them. They gotta take care of it. And just that way, that conversation earlier, I sent a text to somebody, they do issue notice to appear.
Oh, they do?
They do.
A notice to appear?
Because they are an enforcement officer, a code enforcement officer.
That's a new one on me?
Our, our code would need to say that they could enforce it, but they are an enforcement officer.
So we, we could talk about that in the workshop?
Right.
Right, I thought they could issue a notice of violations, but not a notice to appear.
Well, that's what he told me, of the notice to appear. It's a notice to appear for.
Today too, if they're, if they're an officer with a badge, the, the code enforcement folks that are certified have a badge, right? They, they should be able to issue citations and stuff.
Gary, follow up on that, see, because I believe, that's what I'm used to. If this changed, I, I'm wrong. But a notice to appear had to be issued by a bonded law enforcement officer. A notice of violation could be issued by a code enforcement. That's what I've always...
And that may be what they're issuing, but I ask them if they usually...
All right, let's get back to the HR firm.
Or cemetery, where's that cemetery?
Well, yeah, but, uh, I'm going back to, um, the HR firm, twelve thousand dollars. Do we wanna keep it at that? Courtney and I've looked at it, it's probably gonna be that or ten or something, but, um, that keeps us from going to twenty anyway.
Just leave it.
I think twelve is sufficient. I think that's sufficient.
Set on that.
I beg your pardon?
Set on it.
Okay, all right, then we're gonna go with that one. And, um, the utilities seventeen, maintenance and repair of your buildings fifteen, that way we can get what we need done and, and put your, put your light pole out there. Code enforcement thirteen at this point, HR firm, um, we're gonna leave that at twelve. Um, maintenance and repair, okay, we got all of that for the streets and roads, so we got cemetery, fifteen thousand. And we got, uh, one thousand, one hundred and eighty-five dollars that we need to, uh, re, re, reassign to balance the budget and, and your cemetery. Now, with fifteen thousand in the cemetery, we haven't done any work on any of the cemeteries. You, you might be able to do something there. You might be able to make them look nice.
I've always wished that we could have cemetery fencing that was the kind with the brick posts that are, you know, and then you have the metal pieces that go across. I mean, it's sim, it, it's, does the same function as the horse trough post we got now, but it looks more dignified than we, we use with the wooden fencing. And I don't know what the differential in the cost would be, but there is a chance that we could look at... maybe finding out if we could afford, can afford that. We might could try to get a historic preservation grant for either one of those cemeteries. We probably could, but it's going to require match. So, I mean, where you could get for a quarter of the amount of money, say like if you were asking for $50,000, then you'd have to put in, a quarter of that would be the match and a quarter of that would be the actual cash. So, I can't do math real good, but it's not too much.
And I thought, if I had the time to look into that. Ms. Rose McCoy in Appalachia gets grants for their cemeteries over there all the time. But it takes, you know, you've got to be able to have time to do that. And you could use that 15 for a match or some of it.
And then you could use the city employees or the prisoners' work to install it after you purchased it with the grant funds. It's just, I mean, it's a way to do that. But it was especially the one there on the highway. I mean, I really think they both need to be made more dignified.
If there's grant administration money in them grants, she may be willing to apply for one for the city of Caravelle and she may as she grant and get paid from the grant.
That's an idea. Or we might even contract her to do it if we had this, you know, this little bit of money. She likes Caravelle. I think she taught school here.
She did. She taught at Sean's.
So, do y'all want to leave the 15 in the cemetery? All righty, now we got $1,600 to reappropriate here, to assign. $1,600.
Put that on the mayor's salary.
Are we leaving that at 15? I'm sorry, I was trying to get my computer back.
Is there anywhere where we think we're short in something?
We never did add the $2,000. For the maintenance.
Never do it.
We could put it there.
We can put the whole $1,600 because it's over a couple thousand anyway.
Now, what happens if we want to reappropriate mid-year? We see that we're over budget somewhere. Do we have to notify the county or do we have a public advertisement?
We would just have, just like we do the CRA. Because at the end, you're going to reappropriate everything anyway at very, very end. You can do it two or three times. It's just like the regular, I mean, as long as you can do notice.
So, we're going to go to streets and roads then, huh? $16,000. $16,000. All right, does that balance?
Yes.
Code enforcement, dogs. All right, let's move to the airport. Okay, this is a short one. Y'all have it? Airport. I want to tell you, they're doing good out there because immediately when they, when we went to volunteers and saved $20,000 on them. This is what's given us a lot of surplus we're saving on the airport. We haven't had three employees for streets and roads. We had a couple of, or one big subdivision that wasn't being assessed at city taxes. And we got that rolling now. And, you know, we're doing good. You know, actually, we're doing real good.
The other generals should add them, a few of them.
We had ragtag vehicles when I came on board in a ragtag city hall and roads weren't being paved and streets were full of debris. And we're moving forward. All right, airport, they're expecting on their, to make $26,910 on their hangars. And I had a worksheet on that. Did they get to see that? But there is a worksheet for on their rent. I have that right here if y'all want to see it. And then the accounts receivable, that's the past due rent that we're still trying to collect, $12,135 that there's a claim now has been filed against the estate. It has been probed. They expect to make $15,000 on fuel, interest income, $50. They make $1,800 a year on the lightning detector out there. And their total estimated receipts is $55,895 and less 5%, $2,794. Their estimated, final estimated receipts, $53,125. And according to what they have in the bank on 8/20, and what they're going to be spending on utilities and janitorial coming up, they expect they're going to have $49,274, $49,274 and 60 cents in the bank to roll forward. This budget may change because their fuel QT pod system is finished. And there's no, there's no fuel available. And did y'all get the worksheet for the QT pod system? It's $21,000.
I got it written on my note.
Okay, it's $21,367. They're trying to get the DOT to pay $18,000 of that for the match of $3,300 to, from the airport. But if DOT won't respond in time and manner, they're just going to have to go ahead and pay that. So, it's going to come out. So, but anyway, their total estimated receipts for, with their cash that they have and what they're expecting is $102,374.85. Maintenance contract for fuel tank, $1,695. Accounting and audit, $500. Rent sales tax payable on the rent, $1,715. Their insurances, $5,665 for their fuel tank, their little electric cart and their buildings, their hangars and stuff. Maintenance and repair, $5,000. Advertising, $500. Other charges and obligations, $500. Office supplies, $700. Utilities, $7,000. And that includes, you can see there, not gas, but electric, water, phone and entry system. And they have to, they're required by statute to have Wi-Fi. And in their phone, they have a phone line for the QT pod system. And they're required by law to have a phone at the terminal. And those are business phones.
It's an AM or alarm.
AM or alarm. So, their utilities are pretty good out there. And the runway lines and stuff. Y'all turn your phones off.
It's an AM or alarm.
Well, we want to go with the purchase though.
We're in a good building, huh?
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Fuel purchase, $20,000, they expect. Fuel tank maintenance, $1,000. That's Mr. Ernie checks the sump pump, he sump, whatever he does. To it, books and publications, $500. Janitorial services, $1,500. License and permits, $50. And then their wish list, capital projects, that's the cost of the fuel system upgrade. Now, DOT does come forward and fund $18,000, then they'll be able to apply, fund some of these unfunded. Airport signage, they need signage out there very bad. There is none. It's required by the FAA. So, we have surplus and we put that $8,233.729 to signage. And then we had another surplus and we put it to stormwater management, And they need some serious stormwater, the ditches somehow. They need, that needs to be managed. And at the west end, southwest end of the runway, it's like a swamp down there. It's just really, really wet, right near the end of the runway. They need to get the gate code system set up and they're going to have to hire a technical person to do that. Then a master plan has projects on the priority list. And so, if there's money, then they would pick one of those projects. And then they would like to have additional equipment out there. They would like to have a regular mower for the back of their tractor because they have, their mower now has these wings that go down. They're getting fencing around the perimeter of the runway. And the FDOT joint participation agreement requires that that fence be mowed on each side. They don't want to have to bring the fence in. If they take that tractor out with that big mower and those wings, it's going to be like, what, 15 feet or 18? And they don't want to have to have that much, the fence in that much. And then they have to mow over there too. So, they would like to have a mower where they're just mowing like six feet on each side or something like that.
When you're talking about just changing the mower deck to cut that or?
Yes.
They're a single.
Yeah, none of that stuff.
Yeah.
Okay.
What you do is buy one that's just a single. Whether you buy six, eight or 10, you just buy a single.
And then they would like to have a zero turn so they can do some of the smaller work. But they need that mower that has those things that drop down to do the big, you know, right runway and stuff. And then they need a grader box to level out where they've done a lot of tree removal. And so, and they may have to use a grader box. They may need that first so that they can mow around the fence in the first place. And so, that's what they need. Their total estimated expenses are $90,239. And they're just going to, for their balance forward, they're just going to use for now that number, $12,135 that's passed to the rent. They're just going to, just call that a balance forward for now. Just keep moving that forward on the budget until it either funds or we can write it off. And so, that balances their budget at $102,374.85. Is that all right?
If they figure out the fund and they can change this up.
Yes, I told them that, that we've got almost a month. And so, some of this may change. If they, if they have to go ahead and pay for the QT pod system, these numbers are going to change right in here. But it will still balance and we'll make sure everybody... And I would like to bend my math too. The CRA budget. Y'all want to review that or are you familiar with this?
Well, we thought we already done that.
Well, but it's part of the workshop.
Oh, we can.
I mean, I'll leave that up to you all. We've been on it. We, it was presented. And we made a couple of changes when it was presented. We had...
And I gave them a new grant.
Yeah. We had $10,000 to maintenance and repair. And then in our workshop, we added $4,700. So, that's $14,700. Let's see, we added 85. We had 85 for the street light, Marine Street street light. And we added 15 to make that 100, right? Did we do that? Yes. Okay. And then we were going to have a mural for $10,000. And then... Yeah, but it's budgeted. It's a capital project. And we put $75,000 to a three-year commitment, $75,000.
For Marine Street.
Yes. That's the, try to get a new sidewalk and fencing for three-year commitment. And then I just want to say, over the years, we have dumped a ton of money in Marine Street. And I'd like to see some of the businesses come around now and do something.
I would too. But I'd like to also make another suggestion from CRA. And I had mentioned it in our CRA meeting. Is I'd like to see us do the same thing since we're going to go with that third employee. And we're going to be doing some work with streets and roads in the CRA district. I would like to see us justify a percentage of CRA covering some of the expense of the road.
This is what I'd like to see from streets and roads. I'd like to see them, some handwritten time sheets like we did from the water and sewer. So, we know when they're coming and going. Just this week, someone checked out early last week. And Courtney, I think Courtney had to make the phone call. They checked out early. They checked out. But were they sick? Were they on vacation or whatever? We had, you know, if they'd just go ahead and provide us with some sheets like that, staff wouldn't have to...
Well, we had clocks, right?
Well, they clocked out, but he does have to say.
Justify why they left.
Right.
They don't tell me where to take the time from.
Yeah, and you know, on the time sheets, it says...
I mean, they checked out, they clocked out, it was on the clock. They got permission from the supervisor. It was on the clock. Now, they, when we were doing payroll, we didn't have a sheet that said sick or vacation. We didn't know where to put the time.
Got you.
So, if they could start doing some sheets, you know, to let us know.
If they don't work their 40 hours, yeah, they got to either be on annual leave or...
But we need to know.
Sick leave or administrative leave.
The paychecks have to be, you know, your hours.
We've been working on this a while, you know? It's just get the bugs worked out.
Even with water and sewer, I don't see their leave sheets. But I see their overtime sheets. I mean, if roads and streets does overtime, same. Which it is fair.
They get it during storms and stuff.
But they need to document it.
Yeah, it needs to be documented, yes.
They might get a call out on the weekends to tell the park if it's all stocked up or something.
Can Kishy want to review the general fund budget with us again one more time?
Can I make a comment about the general fund budget? If you've got a little bit extra, you know, you still need to do a title search on the, on Tamara Allen Park so that you can either one day use it for something or sell it, whatever you choose to do eventually. But until you get a title search and get out from under that brownfield grant, you're not going to have it freed for the city to decide what to do with it. So, and I don't know how much a title search costs, but it couldn't be...
It's not expensive and we can probably cover it other consultant.
So, the brownfield is still having, still has a lien on that?
Right, until, and the last time they asked you for feedback was like December. And so, I just, I was thinking it was out from under by now. But they want to know, they want to see the title search so they can get out from underneath it. They want you to do that so they can...
It must have been going on four years.
Right.
I would also like to see Tamara Allen Park cleaned up. And maybe our streets and roads, not in CRA, our streets and roads, if we're going to get another employee, new equipment, bush hog, tractor. We can't be cleaning up. Yeah, can't be cleaning up Tamara Allen Park.
If we get that back to fix, we could do a lot. I mean, that's pretty heavy equipment right there.
And we got a bunch of asphalt dumped over there unbeknownst to us. Asphalt chunks. So, it's there.
We have a way to load it. We don't have a way to haul.
It's supposed to go somewhere, that asphalt.
Well, the mill can go somewhere. There's a bunch of, there's a lot of chunks over there as well that got dumped there in 2015.
I agree with you. It needs cleaning up.
It would be nice.
Could be some. We went and worked. We get up there.
Actually, what I would like is to clean it up enough that it can be used for overflow boat ramp parking.
There you go.
That would be a great idea, yeah.
Do we want to put that on the agenda?
Not this next one coming. There's already a lot on the agenda coming up.
We clean it up, the overflow for parking.
Yes.
Yes, I agree with you. Actually, you could take, spread a lot of that asphalt out if you want to do that.
And so, then, you know, maybe streets and roads could clean it and we might be able to use a little bit of boat ramp money to sprinkle some more asphalt or gravel or something to...
Yeah, I'd like to do some lime rock and gravel.
Yeah.
Usually the hard surface.
Right. Stabilize.
But lime rock, yes, if you cook gravel without, it's just going to go away from you. All righty then, is there... All righty then, uh, is there anything else, folks? Anything else? Do we wanna have a meeting next week? Are you happy?
I'm pretty happy.
Not gonna have a meeting next week. Are you happy, Mr. Tom?
With what, ma'am? Yes, ma'am, this has been, uh, very edifying. A relatively new resident of, of Careville and it's, it's been very helpful listening to this.
Okay, good.
I actually wanted to, uh, address some possible certain pay raises, but I think we've done gobble up tonight.
Well, we'll, we'll see how things go during the year. You never know. Like Keisha said, we can always reallocate like we did on the CR, like we do on the CRA. And, um, there's a, you know, we'll see what happens.
We'll see where it goes, yeah.
Code enforcement and all that good stuff. I'll email out my changes to everybody. Okay. All right. And you all have an idea of what it can do for you to reduce your mileage. Thank you, sir. All right, then we're, we're adjourned. Okay? See you next week.